We're gonna start out with letting each candidate have a few moments just to introduce theirselves and share their vision for Macon County as a Commissioner with us, and then we'll start taking -- Peggy's got a question she's gonna start with. So if anybody else has any questions, she just give them to Peggy. And we'll start with John. It's in our house. We start with you.
Oh, that's fine with me.
John Sherrill.
Well, good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm John Sherrill. I'm a candidate for District 1 Macon County Commissioner. One thing I would like to express at this time, there is only a primary for District 1. Whoever, Jim Tate or myself wins the primary, they are your next county commissioner.
And that's next?
And that's May 8. So I'd like for you to know, I am not a politician, and I'm definitely not a public spokesperson. And I get nervous and everything else in front of a crowd, but I'll do the best I can. I'm just an average man, family man, business owner in Macon County. And first, I'm gonna tell you a little bit about myself, and then I'm gonna tell you why I signed up to run for county commissioner. I'm married to Lila Munger Sherrill. We've been in Highlands. Lila's a native Highlander. I've been in Highlands since 1986. We have three children, Alan, Michael, and Jared. My daughter-in-law is Sarah Kimsey Sherrill. We have two grandchildren and one more on the way, soon to arrive. I'm a graduate from Franklin High School, and I own and operate two small businesses in Macon County, J&amp;J Lawn and Landscaping Services of Highlands and Sherrill Produce in Alto. I'm a retired firefighter from Highlands Fire and Rescue. I spent over 20 years volunteering my time for the community. I'm a former Macon County Planning Board member, a former Highlands Recreation Representative to Macon County, a former Highlands High School baseball coach, a former school board boosters club member, a former president of Highlands Little League for more than 20 years. And a few years ago, I was chosen by the faculty and staff of Highlands School to receive the Highlander Service Award, which I was very proud, because I've done a lot of volunteer work and stuff for the school, the students, and all that stuff, so they recognized, and I was very proud of that. But growing up, my family didn't have a lot of money. And when I was 12 years old, I picked tomatoes at AA Farms in Clark's Chapel in Franklin to help buy my clothes, school supplies, and so on. At age 13, I went to work at Hickory Ranch Restaurant in Franklin. And at 14, I went to work at The Mountain Restaurant in Highlands. And I've worked at The Mountain Restaurant in Highlands until I graduated high school. Shortly after I graduated high school, that's when I started my landscaping company, which I own and operate today, 30-plus years. Been in that business, and I opened Sherrill Produce up in 2012. It has not been an easy road for me, but God has greatly blessed me to get where I am today. I am committed to working hard for what I get and what I have gotten. And if I'm elected to the Board of Commissioners, I will promise you, I will continue the same work ethics for the citizens of Macon County. The main reason why I have filed for District 1 Macon County Board of Commissioner race is to take a stand against most of our current county commissioners who are in the process of stripping us of our freedom and private property rights with the Macon County Soil and Erosion Addendum. If it wasn't for this issue, I probably would not have signed up to run for county commissioner. I bought my land. I paid my taxes on my land with my hard-earned money. And I want the government to stay off of my land. I've heard comments that I'm only running on one issue. That is not the truth. However, that is the most important issue of why I filed to run for county commissioner. Here are some of the other issues I would like to address if I'm elected to the Board of Commissioners. In the past six years, under my opponent's leadership, the budget has increased over $5 million. There has been a tax increase under his leadership. The millage rate went from 27.9 to 34.9, and the Macon County taxpayers are overtaxed by approximately $2 million every single year. And this money is going into the undesignated fund balance, which is known as the slush fund. I'm John Sherrill. I'm a very conservative candidate for District 1 Macon County Commissioner. I would greatly appreciate your support and your vote, and I will work hard for you. Thank you.
Well, it's good to be up here among friends. I'll tell you a little bit about myself, as far as for why I'm running for this office and how I came about running for it. And if any of you are surprised, I'm more surprised than you are that I actually did this. I've been around a long, long time, and I've put little poop sheets out in the chairs so you can see what I have done through the years, working in education, government, politics. I'm a tree farmer. The last thing I have been doing is growing trees on my old cattle farm, since I couldn't do cattle as well anymore. And I've planted 15,000 native hardwood trees in the last 12 years. And that's one of the reasons that I have gotten really interested in the property rights and the need to take care of property rights. How I came about running for this office is that I started noticing in the Franklin Press and the other local news media outlets that we never quite got the right story, the full story, on anything that the county did. And it was just sort of like, you just had to read between the lines and try to figure out what the county commissioners were saying, and other people in the county as well. And the staff of the county commissioners would muddy the water for them. And there seemed to be just layers and layers of study committees and task forces and people that they could pass the ball off to when they didn't want to answer a question. And that became just so obvious that at first, I thought maybe it was just a lack of news coverage, that it wasn't being covered well. And then I discovered, the more I looked into it, that a whole lot of it was just downright deliberate, deliberate lack of transparency on what was happening. And how this land disturbance thing came about is a perfect example of that. And that's important, because it cuts across party lines, it cuts across religion, it cuts across where you live, if you ever owned property in Macon County or ever plan to, this will affect you. And it wasn't just taking care of our property either. It was, one of the most obnoxious things was have some of the county commissioners just look down their noses and insult us. And here we go in, you know, to the meetings and try to explain why this is not good for the county or for any individuals at all. Well, it would help some contractors, and that's not a bad thing. Yes, we won't help the contractors too, but there's a whole lot of other people in the county that need help too, and we need to pass the goodness around. And so the more I saw the lack of transparency and decided a whole lot of it was deliberate, I started getting my neck hairs up, and I started asking questions and going to the county commissioners' meetings and talking to other people. And what I discovered was that people had lost faith in the government of Macon County, in our local government. And a whole lot of people weren't talking about it much, neither of the political parties. They were sort of avoiding it. They sort of went out of their way to talk about how they would fix Raleigh and fix Washington, D.C. You mentioned what's happening in Macon County and how we can fix that. It's just like, oh, Lord have mercy, let's not go there. You know, that's waiting in the swamp. You know, we don't want to have repercussions come from that. And I discovered that really was a great fear. So a whole lot of people in Macon County just didn't see how the government was working, how the Macon County government was working, because it was just not obvious. The organizational charts were so convoluted that if you had, needed to get a permit for something or find out some information, you could file a public records request, and you'd get sent all over the courthouse for a day and never find anybody who could answer your question or where you could get the information you wanted. It's just that kind of thing that just kept building. So I went out, I mean, in my status of retired and in between planting my trees, and I went out and talked to a whole lot of wonderful people in the county that I thought would make wonderful county commissioners, and tried to get them to run. And they just wouldn't do it. They just didn't trust what would happen to them if they did it. So on the very last day of filing, nobody had run, nobody had filed, and Sherrill, but nobody else would file for one of these two open slots in District 2. And so I decided that I would file myself, and I surprised myself when I did go down and file. So I came to the game late, but I had been trying my best to catch up in a hurry just by listening to people. So beyond the lack of transparency, the next thing I kept, after I filed, everything just kind of broke loose. People started calling me and sending me letters. And the one word that popped up over and over and over, like one of those cloud things on the computer, you know, was "change." People won't change. And they were using words like, "open up the barn door," "drain the swamp," "tear down the kingdoms." I mean, you know, it's like, everybody had their own way of saying, "We won't change. We won't change in Macon County," where Tier 1, which is the lowest-ranked county of the counties in North Carolina, there are three rankings, and Tier 1 is the lowest ranking, and that's based on poverty, underemployment. 20% of our households in Macon County live below the poverty line. 58% of our schoolchildren come from homes that are ranked poor and in need. And if we didn't have some very wealthy sections of the county to skew those numbers upward, we'd be in a worse fix than we, than it looks like we are. So anyway, all those things together, people wanted change. They wanted to know what was happening. They won't change. And the last thing that I can mention that I have heard over and over is they want equality of opportunity. And that includes everything from services the county provides to jobs. People are tired of applying for jobs, but it will be somebody's relative who gets hired. There are just too many kingdoms or fiefdoms built in Macon County, and people are very much aware of that. That control is keeping a whole lot of good people from even applying for jobs, because they say there's just no use. There's just no use, because they know who's going to be doing the hiring. And they, and I'm talking about government now, although it also takes place in the private sector as well. But all of those things together are the reasons that I decided to file and run for county commissioner. And so here I am.
Well, friends, I'm Ron Haven. I've been a county commissioner in Macon County. I was commissioner from 2010 to 2014. And I feel like sometimes I probably would have stayed in office, but I didn't quite tell enough lies like they wanted to tell at election time. I've come out too much and told the truth. But anyway, talking about Macon County, I remember a time not too long ago, and all of you do, when this county was very, very well surviving. You didn't go around and find signs everywhere that says, "Help wanted you stop in," and they paid you minimum wage. There was something going on. There was building and construction going on. And west of Asheville, people looked at us high on the mountaintop. We had everything we needed going on. We had jobs here. Education was doing good, and it seemed like all of a sudden we come to a standstill. And there's a number of things. I'm not gonna point my finger at any one thing and say it caused it, but it seemed like that you've got a group of people, in my opinion, that they think it's all right just like it is. Now, I didn't tell you a whole lot about myself. I've been in real estate a lot. I've owned some motels, and today I promote gun shows. Being a guy out of Asheville, North Carolina, I own Jim Capital Shows. If you've come to the gun shows in Franklin or Waynesville or Andrews or Murphy, we're the one that promotes them shows. We also do about 32 to 35 a damn year right now. I'm not bragging on it, but we're one of the two top-sized gun show promoters in the state of Georgia. I just got through doing a huge show in Atlanta this past weekend. I do a lot of traveling, and I'm starting to see that this economy that we've been in, where there's places that's coming out of it. I could give you examples the rest of the night, but it's just like going down around Beaufort, Georgia. You go down there, and you see all this construction, you're seeing things that are starting to bloom, you're seeing jobs, you're seeing people doing well. We come back to Franklin, we come back to Macon County, and I'm looking at this thing, what's wrong here? And when you go talk to officials, and they look at you like, "Oh, well, think about that just a minute." If you go look at them, and you talk to them about something, you got an idea, "Oh, well," that's end of it, instead of trying to figure out what to do to make us go to. I figured that a good economic development plan, and I talked to Commissioner Higgin about this just a few days ago, if we were to be like around in Gainesville, Georgia, like over in Asheville and Hendersonville, and seeing people who are going out there fighting for our communities, we could make this place a shining star on the hill again. I have worked a lot into tourism, and I still do. I've got a bus system over in Franklin. If you've been over there and seen Franklin N.C. Tourism, that bus is mine. Occasionally, I come through here hauling a load of hikers up and down on Tealaco Gap, and I've got settlers that's over in here every day now, bringing tourism all into our neck of the woods. And I feel like that if we had people who would get out there and try to promote things like this, try to promote jobs, try to promote building, commissioners needs to be somebody that's gonna work with you, work for you, instead of working against you, instead of, "Oh, well." I know there's some of you people in here that knows me. I've been over here into Nantahala. Remember Brian Bateman I was talking with at one time, and there was some issues, and I'm not in District 3. I'm in District 2. But when you vote for commissioners, you can vote for District 1, 2, and 3. I was over here as much to try to do as what I could to help. And Brian explained the situation to me up here, about having to have a single pump or fire truck. Some of you in here are aware of that, right? You remember when it was? You weren't able to get insurance on people's houses if they weren't so far, I mean, there was certain distance you had to be from the fire department. So I said, "Brian, will you come over there?" I said, "See what I can do." And so, as far as I know, everybody is able in Nantahala to get insurance on their house. And many of you, if the price dropped on what you had to pay because of being able to have that service station. So when you've got a problem, and you go to a commissioner, and you need something in your community, you need a person that gets up and goes to see what it is, not, "Oh, okay." So friends, if I'm elected in as a county commissioner again in this seat, I make my phone number publicly. I don't care if you call me in the morning. I get up early. I don't care if you call me late at night. I may be doing a gun show down in Atlanta, Georgia, but I'm not far away from home. That's just a business I do. But I feel like that what we need more than anything else is some people that's gonna get behind us, help make our county great again, help make us move forward. Property rights, if you remember an issue, if you wanna go back, remember the steep slope ordinance. I guess I made one of the, well, I called, no, I'm not gonna call them. I made one of the folks on the planning board some ad that he couldn't see straight. He used to go out, and the way that they'd do it, they'd put a little sign about this big old behind somebody's car, planning board meeting. And so I stopped down to Jared Owenby's and talked to Sammy one day, and everybody's come in there. I put them to go down here, and I had a crowd of people down here. They had puffed up big, big feet, but I fought and banged against that slope ordinance until it shut up. And I'm gonna tell you something. It's tabled or shelved, whatever you want. It's still there. But I fought against that enough that people started to say, "Well, wait, we better shut up about this. We go on to something else." This same deal we're looking at right here, this land disturbance, another thing. As soon as we're starting to get back up again, what happens? These same people start throwing rocks at us again, just like this slope. Friends, thanks very much for giving me an opportunity to speak with you, because any questions, like, excuse me, when it comes to my turn, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them any way I can. Thank you.
The questions, Peggy will give you all the questions, and all three of you will have time to respond.
We'll start on that end, if that's okay to everybody. If elected, will you approve funding for a full-time officer in Nantahala, law enforcement officer?
Well, newly into this, I've never been a county commissioner or any public official before. But if a sheriff is an elected official, so we all elect a sheriff, and if the sheriff, he presents his budget to the county commissioners, and if he will, if the sheriff will put it in his budget, I will vote to have a sheriff deputy in Nantahala for that funding. But I have no control over the sheriff's deputies, other than giving the sheriff the finances and the tools. So it will be up to the sheriff to put it in his budget. But I am a firm believer that all citizens of our county and areas should have police protection.
Well, it was my understanding that it already was in the budget. They just don't send them over here. I've heard that several times, and it sounds like from the response here that that is true, at least that's what you think. And it's what I believe, because I've heard it that much many times. Actually, I think you need somebody here around the clock. You need three, really, in eight-hour shifts. My belief is that, and I've said this a lot in the last few days, is that we have only two incorporated towns in Macon County, and that's Franklin and Highlands. And somehow, they kind of managed to get a whole lot more of the services from the county than Nantahala does. Nantahala is a community, though, exactly like Iowa and Alto and Burning Town and LAJ. And there should be the same level of service of all kinds, county services in Nantahala that are in all of our other communities. And I don't think that that takes rocket science to figure that out. That just seems fair to me. And that was what I was saying earlier about equality of opportunity. Everybody needs the opportunity to have access to county services. And I think it is quite egregious that you do have law enforcement paid for, and they just don't come over here. And that's an operational dysfunction rather than a financial one.
I'm gonna answer that as simple as this. Here, I voted twice to fund a full-time law enforcement officer in Nantahala. One time, it was Governor's Highway Safety Program, and that was to make sure that all the county was covered. And I remember that's one of the times that I voted to head fund the officer to Big Year. And another time, they was talking about what it costs for the clothing, what it costs for the police car, and all that that I voted for. So the answer to it is yes.
If elected, will you approve funding for a new school building, says Franklin? I think they probably mean here.
I think I wrote it there, Franklin, if they, just for funding for a new school, new high school in Franklin. It's been in the, going around that they're gonna build a new school there, and I was curious about that.
Me? All right. I have, I was on the planning board when the talks became in the open about a new high school in Franklin. And we were tasked to start looking for land for the high school. And it's my understanding that it's in a 10-year community plan. And to answer that question, I would have to say that I would have to be really convinced that we need a new high school, that that's our only option. And we cannot reconstruct, remodel and stuff of the existing high school. You're talking about probably $70 million, but at that time, I'm a firm believer that that has to be presented to the bill payers, which is the taxpayers. If the taxpayers are on board with it and everybody's satisfied with that, then I would support. But it would be, but that's where I stand on it.
One of the many jobs I had in my former life was superintendent of Vance County Schools. Vance County Schools was just north of Raleigh, up near the Virginia Line. And well, and I used to be associate superintendent of Macon County Schools, back when the middle school, I came here as associate superintendent, just after the middle school was built. And I must say that it was a beautiful school back then. It's filled with mold now, and has not been maintained for the last 40 years. But we have kept, used to keep up the schools quite well in Macon County. But we, we have kept, used to keep up the schools quite well in Macon County. When I was superintendent of Vance County Schools, Vance County was exactly twice the size of Macon County. That we had over 15 schools, over 1,000 employees, and we were really making progress, including, while during the years I was there, we actually built a school. So I got to be a part of, of buying the property and planning it, having the state facilities group come in from Raleigh and help us plan it. And that's what we need here in Macon County. I don't know if the State Department still does that, those kind of planning things, but facilities planning to help local people do that or not, but that's really what's needed here. And, and I've also been on facilities planning teams for Asheville City, for Haywood, and Madison County. And, and that involves gathering groups of people, deciding what you want, what kind of schools you want, how you want to put money into it. And so there's a group of people who help decide. That's what we need here in Macon County. As specifically for Franklin High School, what I'm hearing is that there is sort of a battle going on between the people who want education and the people who want to get the drugs out of the county. And there's a, a fund balance of about $20 million in, in Macon County right now, which is not going to build a, a high school, but it would be used in conjunction with other things over bond issues and that sort of thing over a period of time. But there, there is sort of a controversy going on, on whether we need a new high school or a new detention center. Because we farm, we spend about $400,000 a year sending our overflow of prisoners over to Clay County and Clay and Cherokee County. Did you know that? I didn't know that until just recently, that, that we were sending a huge number of our overflow prisoners over there. And our detention center really is a shoddy building. I mean, it really is in need. We have lots of needs in, in Macon County and for that reason, I second what, what Mr. Sherrill has just said. You know, it needs to be discussed, it needs to be discussed in the county, how we're going to spend our money, what our priorities are. There are a, a number of people who had rather see us fix up the schools we have than to, than to start from scratch and build a high school. Because it is, it is a huge expense for a long, long time, having, building a high school. That doesn't mean we don't need one, but it doesn't mean that the one we have is falling apart. It's not in that bad a shape, I don't think. I can't say that for the, for the detention center, though, or for the, for the middle school, because those are in, in trouble. Well, anyway, my point is, I think the people ought to decide about big items like that. They ought to, we ought to have referendums. Anytime something comes up where, where it's going to cost a whole lot of money and it's going to come out of our paychecks, that's what I believe. On, on the way over here, I took a swing through Parker Meadows, beautiful, beautiful place. The people should have voted on that. I mean, that was a huge expense. And with us needing high school, a detention center, fix up the middle school, expand the overflowing South Macon School, we should have got to vote on that. Everybody should have. So I'm a believer in referendums. Sorry I took so long. You can tell I spent a lot of time in education. I'm prejudiced, biased, I mean, go ahead.
Friends, you know what it means to live and within your harvest? I think I would, I want to have the very best for the citizens of Macon County, especially our children. I've got a couple of twin sons right now. One of them graduating Western Carolina University a couple of weeks, and the other will graduate next year. The reason is that, um, he took some summer courses and achieved, he went out in front of them just a little bit, but they're only 20 years old. And this new early college they got in Macon County helped do that and I'm so proud of it. And I have talked to a lot of people about further in education, but another question you asked, would I vote to fund a new high school? There again, that's not something I'd throw my hand up in the air without looking at a lot of things and hearing from a lot of people. But I would not be against doing anything I could to help our children get as good an education as we possibly could give and a place to get it.
I think they've already answered my third question, don't even have to ask.
All righty.
I think you guys might have answered this, but I'll start with you. Who sets the budget for law enforcement for the areas in Macon County, the sheriff or the commissioners?
Well, to my understanding, the sheriff will present a budget to the commissioners and then the commissioners will approve or not approve the sheriff's budget.
Yes, that's, I agree with that. The, the thing that the county is responsible for, county commissioners are responsible for, though, are, are figuring out how to go about getting the facilities that the law enforcement needs. So in, in that sense, the whole business of, of when and how to, to get our detention, more appropriate detention center is, is up to the county commissioners. As for how, as for how law enforcement officers are, are assigned to various parts of the county and all, that is clearly under the purview of the sheriff.
Exactly like Bo said, sheriff, he brings his budget to the commissioners and we line out and go through and agree or disagree on whatever the request for money is for the year. If we see things that we feel like need adjustment, we can talk about it as a commissioner and make suggestions. He can vote yes or no on it, but what is presented to the commissioners is brought by the sheriff's budget and in the end, we will approve it as a commissioner.
Are you aware there is no radio communication for any emergency responders in Nantahala? And how important do you think it is that all children in Macon County are given safety and protection as a top priority?
I think it's 100% crucial that these children are protected. And, and you should have, I'm, I'm totally for protection for Nantahala. It's, and your children, and anything that I could do as a commissioner to help solve these issues, I would be 100% in favor to help Nantahala with this.
Well, my belief is that if, you know, we can send people to the moon and Mars and surely we can get some communications in Nantahala. And I don't understand how the whole broadband thing works and I'm, I'm still just, you know, working on learning how to better use my new, new phone and my computer and that sort of thing. I'm sometimes perfectly happy feeling like, you know, just all these things that go through the air are, are magic. I get along just fine with that. But what, where the rubber does meet the road is, we need better communications, both for safety and for, for work, employment, out in, in all of our communities. And Nantahala, especially as the most distant community from good communications, is, is certainly hurting. I wish I knew enough about broadband and how to do this kind of thing, to, to, to make some recommendations. But all I can say is, is if I'm elected county commissioner, I'll sure find out and try to do something about it because I think that it's desperately needed, both for safety and for just communicating with people who can work from their homes and businesses. And if you had better communications here, you would have all kinds of little entrepreneurial things that would start popping up right among yourselves.
When I was commissioner, I had voted several times on different places that was dead spots, as we called it, number one. If you're familiar with where the welcome center is, South Franklin, there was a tower that we voted to put in there to where the communication, not only just for law enforcement and for the fire departments and state police and everything, but for Verizon to be able to put in their antennas there for everybody to be able to have a signal. We voted to put one in there, there was another one with Conley Creek because dead communities was in Cal E. Also, just before I left, we voted to put a pole that's right up here at Rainbow Springs, it's up there and it's standing in the air with nothing on it since I left. Would I vote for something like that? I would in a heartbeat. I remember one time my wife, I'd bought a car that was almost new and an engine quit in it just before you get to where you go over the Chunky Gal Mountain, I'm sure you know where that's at, going in toward Hays. From up there all the way back to Wyandotte Star Gap is dead, there's no signal whatsoever. And it was like one of those days and it was 100 degrees in the middle of the sun and here she was with two smaller kids and had to walk for several miles down toward Hazel just to be able to get a signal. And that kept flaring up in my mind when we were talking about that. Now, as I left as commissioner, they were supposedly to be able to, within the next three years, to have Macon County fully 100% where the communication was everywhere all the way around here. And Kenny, you might know about this, is it still that they use a fire department radio over here, law enforcement?
You've got communication on radios in certain areas.
Right.
But for instance, the school, you can't talk to the dispatch fire department law. If you're down here and need help, I mean, the school has nothing.
Well, that's something that I thought hard to get and not only for just Nantahala.
It's been like that a long time.
I know, and for our whole county, I thought to keep communication up as high standard.
You've got other areas that, I mean, you just can't, you know, if there's a deputy over here and needs help, he can't get help.
I understand. Well, I know in some parts that they would carry a, I guess it was a handheld wacky tuckie that they could talk off of.
Well, we used to do that, it was called, it was low band. Low band worked some places over here, they done away with that. That's been probably 15 years that we've.
Some things like that would be some of the things that I would fight to try to get for you. And I feel like that it's not something that you don't need. We need it all the way through our county from one end to the other.
Yeah, we got terrorists, you know, somebody tries to break into the school and shoot it up, you have no way to get them.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're probably down on the river, but not down here. I'm like, you're walking your miles now.
Exactly, I know what I said.
And while you.
That's Wolf Mountain up there.
Oh, whoa. I know, you're right.
Yeah, and this one for all of you. Would you support any license requirements such as 153.06 license requirement for disturbance of soil on your own property?
I would vote in an instant to abolish this, this grading licensing and stuff. It's, it's overstepping the county's commissioners' grounds by stepping on and promoting regulations on your private property. So it would be, the first time that I got a chance to vote on that, it would be, and my vote would be, it's history. It will be abolished.
There's nothing at all wrong with the soil and erosion ordinance that is, that the state has put out. And the Macon County has abided by that, it's not very well enforced, but for a long, long time. We all like that. I haven't heard anybody say anything about, "We want soil erosion." You know, nobody is against the original ordinance. What has angered thousands of us in Macon County is that added-on regulation requirement to, to stick it to citizen property owners who are non-contractors. The, the original ordinance has, has to do with, with professional contractors. And we are all in agreement with that. But this other thing has nothing to do with soil erosion. It has to do with occupational licensure of you and you and you and me and, and anybody who wants to, to disturb some soil. I disturbed about three acres of soil just a few days ago and didn't get my trees planted because of the rain. But I, and I, you know, lived there for like 70 years. I would just resent having to go down and get some fresh-faced administrator, give me a, have to get a permit, go down and, "Please give me a permit so I can go disturb some soil and plant some more trees." I, I don't, I don't want that. I don't want that for myself or for anybody else. And it isn't just, it, it isn't just a matter of, of, of doing the right thing by the good earth. I mean, most people want to do the right thing. Most people want, want to find out how to treat their soil and do it well. And I mean, there have been thousands of people in Macon County who have done that for decades and centuries. And it's, and it has not been all that bad. There's a problem here and there once in a while. But having causing every one of us to get a permit and then be subject to fines and penalties if we don't jump through the hoops is just obscene, in my opinion. It's just obscene. It's unnecessary, it has nothing to do with preventing soil erosion. All it is, is occupational licensure that the county commissioners have no business sticking their noses in.
Come on second, I'll watch you say it.
Afraid not tonight.
Friends, I've been faced with lots of things that come in on county property rights while I was a commissioner. And I'm all for what the state has got for our building codes and our soil and erosion. And there's not only just this right here, I say note this quickly to make you hit swim, but there's a lot of other things in there, too. Another one that you're gonna hear about that I don't like at all, and maybe I'm getting off track, they bringing it up, is floodplain ordinances and things like that. If you want to fill a little property over here in the floodplains, as long as you've got some dirt right there to do it with, you can. If you bring it from somewhere else, you can't. That right there was passed by. That right there was passed by a few of these knuckleheads. I should have called them that. A few of these county commissioners in the past that didn't have no respect for your property rights. I made a motion one night and I said, Mr. Higgins, sacred it to drop all that. But these same three out of these four that will not vote to kill this, kept their hands in the air to keep that. That's only one of several other things against your property rights. No, I believe in your property rights. If you're doing something safe to your land that's not bothering the person next door, you shouldn't have that right. And this for all of you. Would you support funding for a new community building and library at the Nantahala Recreation Park and put it in your first budget if you're elected to the Board of Commissioners? We're tired of never getting anything for the tax money we send over the mountain.
Well, as a county commissioner, I would be willing to entertain any wishes that Nantahala community would ask for. I think you should get your fair share. We have community center in Highlands. We have community center in Franklin. Matter of fact, we are, we're in pretty good shape, as far as I'm concerned, in these other two communities. And it is time that you people of Nantahala get some attention over here. So absolutely, I would be, I would entertain the projects to try to place those in the budget for Nantahala residents.
I agree with that. And it, it all comes down to the, county commissioners seem to do projects ad hoc, just whoever is the last person who has come in and pushed them to do something. At the last county commi, well, two county commissions ago, a group of firefighters came in and asked for $1.3 million to build a fire tower for practice. A very worthwhile project. The problem was, it wasn't in the budget, but they approved it anyway, took it out of a reserve fund or some sort. And I remember Paul Higgins said, but this isn't in the budget. Shouldn't we have this budgeted ahead of time? I mean, surely we knew, would have known a year or two ago if we needed a fire tower and it's going to cost $1.3 million rather than just, you know, in 10 or 15 minutes, just do it. You know, just do it. And there were several other things. I've forgotten what else happened in that meeting where money was just sort of handed out. The, and getting back to spending large amounts of money, you have every right here to, you know, just, just, you know, get your neck hairs up and speak up and insist that the county commissioners talk to the people and let people vote on things. There's been over $4 million spent on Parker Meadows. Beautiful, beautiful place. But, you know, it was, it was all done behind the scenes. It just sort of happened, a little piece at a time, a little piece at a time. We have put tremendous amounts of money into the airport. Yeah, I like to fly in an airplane. I like airports. I just don't like spending all of our money for about half of 1% of our population to use. And I don't like having, not getting any answers for it. In the very last county commissioners' meeting, somebody went to that meeting and wanted to know and ask, if you're in the public comments section, this is in the minutes of the meeting, that, well, where's the money going? When's the airport finally going to be finished? When, when are we going to quit putting money into it? The airport authority was asking for $400,000 again to expand the airport again after we put millions of dollars into it and very few people using it. And the answer, and this was, this was in the minutes of the meeting, written right up as if it were somehow legitimate, one of the county commissioners, oh, what's his name starts with G, not Gillette, what is? Gillespie. Gillespie suggested to the man who came and asked, when are we going to quit putting money into the airport? Gillespie said, well, they, they didn't know exactly, but he suggested that this citizen go to the next airport commis, airport authority meeting. What a cop-out. What a cop-out. You know, just passing the buck. Who's going to go to an airport authority meeting? Somebody else had said that they had done a public records request to find out what all that money is being spent on. Our county manager's response was, we, meaning the county commissioners, are not the keepers of the airport authority records. You have to go to the airport authority to get that kind of information. And of course, the airport authority won't give it to you because they don't have to. Okay, the question then, the issue is, why do our county commissioners just hand out money when Miles Gregory or whoever from the airport or recreation parks or whatever come and want money and they just give it to them, even to the airport when they don't even keep the records? Now, what's wrong with this picture? You know? It's no accountability, no transparency. You can't get information. And so the only thing I see left to do is just, you know, raise cane, just start talking, go into meetings like we did for the land disturbance thing. We, we have got that issue rolling and hopefully it'll keep rolling on up through the summer. You know, we'll see to it that it does. We need to do that about a lot of other things. Now, back to Nantahala and, and the community center and library and everything here, that's what has to be done. And, and the force it, force it, force it to be done, because yes, you do need it.
I've got a question. Whose responsibility would it be to put in the budget for Nantahala new library, your recreation, whatever? Whose responsibility is it? Is that someone's responsibility from over here or is that the county commissioners? I mean, we, you would have to have a spokesman in there somewhere.
Well, the various departments, when, when you're doing a budget for a school district or a county or whatever, the various departments, you know, they all know, they know the lay of the land. I guarantee you, the recreation department, the education board, every, every department in Macon County knows. And they start working a budget up and then it just keeps getting eliminated.
What I'm trying to say, who do we go to in order to get something like this?
Our commissioner.
Commissioner. At this, at this stage of the game, I think you just need to go to the county commissioners' meeting, start speaking up during those public sessions. If you go to the, like the recreation department and various other departments, some of them are afraid themselves, their employees, they're afraid to go to the county commissioners. They're afraid.
Well, they wasn't afraid, they didn't hesitate us at all.
Now, Commissioner Higgins could probably answer that, but it seems to me like that you would approach the county manager and have an item like that placed on the agenda with that, to speak at the county commissioner.
They're working with the state to have $300,000 in there just to go hide out. And they're formulating the budget. The county manager's putting the budget together, gets, gets information from all the department heads, puts it on paper. And about the 15th of May, he will bring that first draft to the county commissioners and then we'll look at what, what the proposed funding is. If you'll get it handy or how somebody or you stay on my seat, I'll bring a copy of that over and we'll go through it.
How to do. Okay. Let me answer down there. I'm sorry. I would like to add that there's one step above that that I would consider, and yes, I would, I would be willing to fund this for you. Another thing, when I came over here with big issues that some of the people was talking about, a place to swim here. And I know we've jumped all over them and there's an issue with the fire service and the game commission on it to stop on that. And I know that they're in. I was not the commissioner at the time Bobby Cooper's was for District One, but it didn't matter. I still over in there trying to stir it up and done what I could. But I know we've got a nice swimming pool in Franklin. We've got one up in Highlands and that's something else that I would love to see for the children to have here too. So if that'd be something that come about in his mind, if I'm elected as a commissioner, I'd be taking the day to talk to him about it.
Can I say something? It seems to me like it's so random what people want. Priority to me would be protecting these kids in the school with everything that's going on. We've got to wake up and really look at that.
Right.
That's huge.
Is there a school resource officer here now?
Shut, huh?
There's a school resource officer here, right?
When he isn't being called up. My understanding is in the last week, he's been told he's not to leave the school. He's just there.
He's never been able to, he's not supposed to leave the school.
Oh, he does.
During school hours.
He's come and talked to my husband during school hours on jobs.
So he's supposed to stay here. So that's a priority.
And what way are you going to work with Paul Higgins to help in the betterment of
Well, as I said earlier, I'm a very conservative person. And it seems like every single day, the government is stepping on our freedoms, taking our rights away and everything else. And I'm tired of the government's overreach on my life. And I would, well, I'm going to just tell you with a, in my mind, as I ran for county commissioner in 2014, I am a very much in favor of a budget, sticking with a budget, living inside that budget, not overtaxing the taxpayers of this county. The slush fund, the state recommends 8% to be in a, in the fund balance. And 20-plus million dollars that's in there right now, I think that belongs to the taxpayers of this county. That can work towards our debt, the wish list for Nantahala, the wish list for Franklin, wish list for Highlands, or whatever. But as far as Commissioner Higgins and myself, we have been connected for, or not connected, but we've been friends for a long time. And there are issues that we somewhat disagree on, but for the most part, Commissioner Higgins and I think a lot alike and believe in the same thing. So I think with Commissioner Higgins and myself and one other on this, we can do wonderful things for this county.
I was at a Democratic men's meeting two or three nights ago, and I'm not really popular with them right now because I'm a Democrat, but I'm kind of in the doghouse with two or three of the Democratic leaders because they had read in the local news media where after this land disturbance thing came up and I got online and spoke my piece and I several times said Paul Higgins is my newest hero because he stood up in those, several of those meetings and stood alone and tried to kill that land disturbance add-on. And so I was terribly impressed by that. And so I spread the word. I'm very impressed by that. That did not sit well with the, with the, some of the leaders of the Democratic Party who think they should be in control of me. That, that there's something wrong with people who will cross party lines to carry out good works for the county. My response to that was, was I'm a Maconian first. I'm a citizen of Macon County and I want what is best for the whole county. I want what will move us ahead and get us off tier one and get us back to where we used to be, which is what Ron was talking about earlier. I remember when we got, got a Walmart out over in Franklin, simply because we, Macon County, at that time, this was in the 80s, was the leader west of Asheville in retail sales. We had a bunch of people who, in Raleigh, who were looking out for us in western North Carolina and in Macon County. We got our secondary roads paved. We got a whole lot of, we got western Carolina expanded. We got a whole lot more money into our schools. We were, what, what is it in, in on the waterfront that that guy says? We, we were a contender. We were a contender. And that meant we had clout, you know, in Raleigh. We had clout in western North Carolina. Macon County is just not there now. And in many ways, in many ways, we are, I hope this doesn't sound rude, but for the farmers and the group, we're still sucking the back tit because of what's happening in the whole state and those of us who have lost control of our own local government in Macon County. We have government from the top down in Macon County. It should be from the bottom up. It should always be from the bottom up. It should be from our precincts up. And so when asked at that Democratic men's meeting, when we were doing our little session, somebody tried to put me on the spot and said, well, what kind of Democrat are you anyway? You know, are you one of those, one of those tree huggers? And I said, yes, I hug my trees. I've planted 12,000 so far. I plan to plant some more and I'm going to hug all of them. I've planted every one with my own hands. Okay, what I'm getting around to is, is I, my response was dead center with the Democrats on one side and the Republicans on the other side. There are two factions on the Republican side. And it's been that way for several years. On the Democratic side of that center line, there, there are three factions. There are what's generally known as the establishments and the liberals and the progressives, with the progressives being more, more, what's his name? Having a senior moment here. Anyway, I said, yeah, I am right in the, in the, in the center of the Democrats. I am a liberal, but I go over here and pull up all of my conservative upbringing because I do not believe in wasting money. The liberal side of me though, believes that you've got to spend money to get good things and make things better. You've got to spend money to make money. You've got to, got to spend money wisely and quit wasting it, quit wasting it. And that's what I see us doing in our family. So I am in total agreement with, with being as conservative as you can financially so that you can have the good life that you want to have for yourself and your children. And that's the way I live. That's the way I have always lived. And it's hard to describe because I'm kind of all over the place. I don't, I can't say that I'm a liberal. I can't say that I'm a conservative and I can't say that I'm much of a progressive, but I do try to get things done. So you can call it whatever you want to.
For two years, two years of the term, I served with Commissioner Higgins and me and him worked together on several things in the grids. I tried hard to work for the people. And there was a word that she used that I liked too, and is spending our tax money wisely for what we need. Paul is very good at that. Paul is very good at that, and you've got a very good commissioner in District Three, in my opinion. I've known Paul for a lot of years, and I would be glad to serve on there again with him and work with him.
I've got a question for the guests. Up front, you, I'll show you at least, that makes it that Macon County is the bottom of the tier. Well, what would you consider Nantahala Township of Macon County to be?
The drakes.
The township of Macon County?
Are you asking me?
I consider it being a paradise in Macon County. I love it over here. It's got some good features, but it's got some bad things back. It's got some very bad needs, but we can get that done back.
I feel that we could do some things about with the right leadership.
Do you have any plan to stop offering county employees health insurance? If you do, are they going to receive a pay increase to compensate?
That's the first time I've ever heard that, removing health insurance from county I have a lot of learning to do, and I understand that. I've got a very open mind. I hear very well. I listen very well. I'm a problem solver. And at that, based on their health insurance, I would have to look at the factors in, is that part of their base salary was their health insurance anyways? Because in the private sector of business, as the small businesses that I run and own, we can't afford to pay health insurance on our employees. But as a recruiting factor for our county government, if that is part of the recruiting factor to get quality employees as health insurance, I don't think that I would be in favor of removing their health insurance.
Well, I'm in favor of health insurance for everybody. Our county government has gone back and forth about this, about the business of health insurance for some time. I read about it in the newspaper. I don't know firsthand exactly what the conversations are, but I just cannot imagine us having, you know, good people in government who, without health insurance, who have children and grandchildren. I mean, it's just vital. It's just vital. It all comes down to a matter of priorities, though. We won't spend four, over $4 million on a recreation park or have health insurance for our children, you know, good lunches in schools, teachers, law enforcement. We just need to set better priorities as a county and plan ahead. Going back to that question that we were talking about a little earlier, I remember about 10 or 12 years ago, there was a notice in the newspaper about the county was going to have some budget sessions, and they had a proposed budget in place. And it would be, it was available down at the courthouse and some office. And I thought, "Well, that's interesting. I'd like to see where we're going." I hadn't been paying a whole lot of attention at that particular year. So I went down to the courthouse to get a copy of the budget, just so I could see what the priorities are. And that's all I wanted to do, just to see where we were going as a county. And it would be there in the budget, according to the newspaper. Okay, I think I went to a county manager's office. I'm not sure. But anyway, I asked for a copy of the budget, county budget that was going to be discussed that was available. And somebody went back there and made a copy and brought me one sheet of paper, an executive summary for one sheet, on one sheet of paper. And I said, "Well, I'd at least like to have the tops of all of the, what do you call them? Yeah, a breakdown down to some level so that I can see the priorities for where our county's going, the big picture. I wanted to see the big picture." And they said, "Well..." They didn't know how to do that. They didn't know how to pull that breakdown out of the computer to let me see just what the priorities were in the county. And I said, "Well, in that case, if it's that hard to get out of the computer, why don't you just print me a whole copy? It can't be more than three or four inches thick. And print me a whole copy." And they said, "Well, they could print me a whole copy, but it would be like $2 a sheet or something like that." You know, it was going to cost me more than $1,000 to get a copy of the county budget that they had advertised in the newspaper was available for public perusal. And so I asked them, "Well, why did you say this was available for the public if I can't get it?" And they said, "Well, you can sit down over there at the computer and scroll through it." They let me scroll through the computer and look at it. Can you imagine? I just, you know, I just gave them their one sheet executive summary back and just went home and forgot it, you know? Saved that for another day.
In my opinion, I want Macon County to have as good employees as we can possibly have to serve us in every respect. And I know there was a study sheet done, and I don't remember any figures on it, and some of our employees are paid less than other counties, and are more paid more. And I guess it's that way with Dale County. I know a lot of the employees that are working here, that's a part of their benefit package. And there was discussion while we were there about people who retired before they become old enough to draw Medicare and things like that, and whether it should be paid. I'm a conservative. I believe in trying to get a dollar's worth of product for you in every way. I won't settle for 50 cents. If there's any of you ever seen me on the board right there, I've got some of the rest of them disturbed because I was fighting for that smaller amount to save it. I figured if I could save all I could, we had money to spend somewhere else without putting it in the pinch. But I feel like if we've got good employees that are taking care of our county, we're going to have to take care of them.
Would each one of you like to make a closing statement?
Sure. Go ahead. Okay, as I stated before, I'm not a politician, but I'm very conservative. I believe that all citizens of Macon County shouldn't be taken care of. I believe we should have the best services of anywhere in the state or in the country. In those services, there's a cost. And I'm all about what the citizens and the taxpayers of Macon County is willing to pay for. I'm just a common guy, will be willing to listen, work for you, work for everybody in this county to make it the best place we can. And I agree 100% that our top priority are our children in this county, and they should be protected. As a county commissioner, I will listen to everything that you have to say about your needs. If we can put it in the budget and approve that budget, I'm all for it. I think Nantahala deserves their fair share, just like any other part in this county. And I would be willing to help you in any way that I possibly can. And if the sheriff, and I'll go back to the sheriff, the sheriff produces that budget and he promotes deputies here, I will be all in favor of that. But I think it's going to be critical for the people of Nantahala to put that pressure under the sheriff to make sure that it happens. But as a county commissioner, we would only be able to fund that we can't control the sheriff. And with that being said, I will help you do whatever I can, when I can, but I will promise you one thing. I will always stand up for your freedoms and private property rights.
My overall observation, try to pull together everything that we've talked about already, is that the number one thing that is lacking in the county, county government, is that, is an orderly organization where citizens know where to go to get questions answered, to have input, to think that government belongs to us, because it does. Instead of having a top-down county government, we need to have communications in such a way that decisions work from the bottom up, that we have public hearings on just about everything, that we have the right to vote about everything that's going to take money, that we can get a copy of a budget proposal every single year, that we can read and take home with us, and that is understandable and is not, and we're not sent out to here or there to ask somebody else. The reason that it has gotten out of control, I think, and I think it can be brought back into control, is that we, is that our county certainly has grown a little bit every year. We get a little bit more populated every year. But I've never seen any figures on it, but I will bet the farm that if we could see the ratio, that county government has grown exponentially in comparison with our population growth. And it's, and as for the lack of communications, what we hear over and over is our county commissioners patting themselves on the back for having created a neutral, what do you call it, a neutral budget?
A revenue neutral?
A revenue neutral budget. What does that mean exactly? What that means is, while our property values have been reduced 40% in the last year or two, our county appraisals are less, we're 40% poorer if we wanted to try to sell our property. As we become poorer in the county, the county commissioners are down there patting themselves on the back for having taxed us more to keep the services they have. You know, when, in my household, when we have a cutback in our finances, we cut back. We don't, we don't talk about revenue neutral. Let's keep all the things that we have, even though we are 40% poorer than we used to be. The other thing is, you hear over and over about, the county commissioners talk about their ability to borrow money. "Well, my gosh, look at your credit card. My credit card has a $20,000 limit on it. That doesn't mean I have $20,000. You know, that means I could borrow. I could go charge $20,000 worth of stuff, but that doesn't make me any richer. That would make me poorer." But that's what the county commissioners talk about that a lot, their borrowing power being so great. Well, it's great because they're letting a whole lot of things go. The schools, the detention center, the Nantahala Community Library, the communications over here. We're not becoming richer as a county. We can't, shouldn't be patting ourselves on the back because our borrowing power is great. We should just pay more attention to what we need and make sure every community, including Nantahala, gets equal opportunity of services.
I would like to say, then, many of you probably know exactly what GOP stands for, Growth, Opportunity, and Prosperity. It's not, I'm a politician, I never will be, but I am registered as a Republican, and when I go to the Republican meetings, I hear that all the time. And I think it's a little bit out of order. It needs to be the O in the front is opportunity. I think we should have the opportunity to do what we want to on our property.
Amen.
I think we should have the opportunity to have good schools. We should have the opportunity to make a living. And we should have an opportunity to go back to a Tier Three in Macon County, and we can. Friends, I'm going to tell you what, I didn't talk too much about it in my early childhood days. I was raised not too much either, and there's a lot of them in here, including us, that was not. But opportunity is something that you take advantage of. That's when the growth and prosperity comes in. I sometimes am sort of disgusted with the way some of the leaders that we look up to has done it. And I'm sure there's a lot of you in here that feel the same way. I think when first was elected in as an official, you didn't put them in there as a lord over top of you. You put them in there as somebody to represent you and to help you. And if I'm elected in, if I can't get out there and do something to help you and work in the community, I don't need to be there. And from the bottom of my heart, the whole time I was there, if any of you knew me, seen me, if there was an issue, I'd be on Facebook asking people. I'd go around and stop in the neighborhoods and asking people their opinion of them, people that whatever the deal affected. I wouldn't go over and ask somebody at the newspaper office, "What do you think we should do?" I'd go out there to the people that something affects, "Tell me what to do. Tell me what you need." I'd keep notes on them that's set and read. This is what somebody that is an elected official is supposed to do. They're supposed to represent you. I'm elected back in, and you called me, I'm not going to ever tell you, "Ah, oh." Unless there was a problem, yes, sit down with me, and I'll see if I can go to bat for you. That's what you would be putting me in there to do. I thank you very much for the time that you give, all of us to come over here and speak to you. And right now, I'm very much hoping that you folks will see John Sherrill as our next county commissioner. And I think that every one of us sitting right here, as you see, she's talking about her being a Democrat, and in both registers or places, it don't matter when you're out here trying to work with your community.
That's right.
I've got people over there that, right now, is on our board, is registered as Republicans, that I have never, ever seen vote conservatively. Now, I'm not calling names. All you got to do is go look at the minutes, and it will tell you that. But anyway, thank each and every one of you for the time you give us.
We have refreshments here for everybody.